While listening to order the Thompson Select Board, it's November twentieth two thousand twenty five, and we're in Donald A. Russell Meeting Room. Please arrive to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Philippines, one nation, united on intermuscle with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Patty, please follow roll, please.
I will. Ronald Roland Tufts.
Here, both of us.
And Callahan. Ryan Holmes.
Here.
David Kennedy. David Kenny, excuse me.
I am here.
Mike Labby.
I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience, guys.
Thank you. All right, next item up, Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. Read and wrote, read and read, got one lane of the approaches to the new Thompson Brunswick Bridge paved yesterday. This morning, the one-way traffic was moved on to the new bridge. It's looking sharp. And Dennis has been told that both lanes of the upstream sidewalk will be ready to turn over to him for plowing by mid-December. Town Hall and the transfer station will be closed on Thursday and Friday next week. The transfer station will be open on Saturday. Come work for Thompson. We're taking applications for a Public Works Director, a Deputy Town Clerk, Police Officers, and a part-time school crossing guard. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Board and Committee reports an update. We have an update on the on the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee. Susan Ray Reeves.
Yes, thank you. Been a long time, and over a year since we've given you an update. So I made it a whopper, four pages. But we've actually been working on Recode now for five years. And as I look at the Select Board, I realize that there's only one member of the Select Board, Roland, who was here at the beginning of that process. So people have come on and hopefully, you know, it takes a bit to get up to speed, but this, now the process has really slowed down. The bulk of the work of the committee is really, is largely done. And we're in the stage of really fine-tuning Recode. And I just have to, you know, say to the, the Comp Plan Implementation Committee is charged with implementing all of the plan. But because Recode is such a monster project, we've kind of, you know, focused just on Recode of the moment. And that's good enough. So in at this fine-tuning stage, we continue to get feedback, you know, from several sources. And we are working on, you know, making this code the best we possibly can for Thompson. I, in the first couple of pages, I gave a bit of history for folks who are newer to the Committee, the Select Board. I don't see the point of reading that into the record. It's there for anybody who wants to read it. But let me go, and I'm glad to answer questions on any of that stuff. And I just wanted to raise one thing, you know, on sort of page three. One of the topics that's come up in conversation around us as a committee. People had said, you know, it's a twenty nineteen Comp Plan, and now it's twenty twenty-five. So we're six years into that plan, and is it still relevant? Times have changed. And so I addressed that, you know, in our update. I think the plan is relevant. Thing, you know, nothing ever stops changing. So, you know, there, there are things that happened, for example, during the pandemic that have influenced what happened with Recode. Some of the businesses and developers have made suggestions based on habits and patterns of behavior, shopping patterns that have changed, and we've accommodated a lot of that. The other thing, other than changes during the pandemic, is the housing crisis has just ballooned. And I think awareness of that is larger than ever. But, you know, I'm really proud that the town residents identified the need for housing diversity as one of the nine big ideas. And, you know, I think that's what holds true today. So I'm picking up on the third page middle. Town planning and zoning are inherently slow-moving. We created multiple avenues for feedback, and we've been helped in doing that by Town Manager, by Directors of Planning. And so all of those multiple avenues for feedback, it's been very helpful, leading us to make many adjustments, particularly in the center zones where that's where we're doing new things. There's nothing particularly new being done beyond the town center zones. But it's in the center zones where, you know, there's a call in the plan for more intentional development, to develop more density where there's already infrastructure. So that's where we, we focus with that new stuff. A couple of things, specific areas where we made adjustments in that early, the early couple of years as the pandemic made it clear that some behavior patterns were changing, particularly around drive-throughs and parking, so, and, and building roof types. You know, so we, we've made adjustments as people have given us feedback. And where we are now, we're in the second public draft. The first public draft, if you remember, came out just around the twenty twenty-four town meeting. And we let people know as they were coming into town meeting, that's something they read on the, I mean, go sleep reading it, but on the town website, all of it was right there. And so now, sitting with the Planning Board, they are engaging with Recode in the workshop process. There's, there's a series of workshops, the dates shift as needed around other work that's coming to the Planning Department before the Planning Board. But having the Planning Board's eyes on Recode is helping us as a committee to identify more revisions that are needed. We're committed to addressing the concerns of both the town, town residents and stakeholders who don't live here, but who develop here. We're aware that Thompson needs strong tax base, at the same time it deserves to pursue the vision described in the twenty nineteen plan. That balance is essential for a good outcome for all of us. So we've been presented with a question at this point, five years in. Why are we doing this? Now, to us who have been doing this for five years, it's like, oh, my God. But it's understandable. Not everybody's been paying attention like the committee has. People are busy, and, you know, it's like if you plug in at one period of time and you don't sort of see what the other changes are coming along, you sort of lose track of what is happening. So it seems worthwhile to just sort of list some of the major reasons why we're doing this. At the point when the Comp Plan Implementation Committee got started and looked at the Comp Plan, we, we, obviously, we were being guided by professional staff. And it became clear that Thompson's land use code was calling out for modernization. It's a mess. People don't usually speak of it that way, but it is a mess. It's confusing. It's difficult to use. It has conflicting and outdated requirements. Planning staff get questions all the time from residents and landowners asking what they can do on their own or what owners next to them on a budding land, what can they do over there that might affect me? Very hard to answer those questions with our present code. The new code will offer more clarity. There are plenty of options. But there's clarity at the same time with illustrations. The current code is almost all text. Illustrations are helpful when you're talking about buildings. It will be easier to use for all concern. By updating zoning and development ordinances, Recode Thompson set out to do several things. To set the stage for a reimagined and revitalized Thompson sentiment by promoting walkable mixed-use development patterns in areas designated in the Comp Plan as intentional growth areas. We set out to focus growth in areas where existing infrastructure can support it, which will strengthen Thompson's tax base. Streamline the development review and approval process. Eliminate redundancies and inconsistencies among various chapters of the code. Incorporate updated design standards and new place-making tools. Protect stable residential neighborhoods and natural resources. Promote sustainable development practices and ensure consistency with federal and state law. Now, the last one's not a big part of Recode, you know, that's just something that's, the town is always concerned with. But in this review of the whole town code, that will be addressed as well. So in conclusion, the stage we're at now is a workshop process with the Planning Board, working through the second public draft of Recode. More changes will come. And CPIC's work now is to make sure that we have consistency in both fairness and consideration for all stakeholders, focus. So the feedback now, I think, is, it's still flowing to us because people are understanding that we're getting to the end. And if they want to have feedback, this is the moment. So I hope this is helpful. You know, it's been thirteen months since our last update. I apologize for that length of time.
Thank you for putting in the background for any people just to be able to get some more stuff in there, and, and I read through the whole thing. It was very clear. I did have one question, though. Can you define for me what it means to protect stable residential neighborhoods?
Well, I think when you go drive through a Thompson residential neighborhood, you know that that's where you are. You're in a residential neighborhood. And I think, you know, you don't want development upsetting that. You want people's property values protected.
Okay, so property values, that makes sense. That's really.
Well, that's an aspect of it, yeah. Quality of life.
And that's where, like, speed bumps would come in, so people aren't flying through, or those kinds of things are just.
That's been, that's a concern. I mean, we heard a lot about unsafe areas where traffic goes faster than people want. We heard that specifically during, do you remember, over the summer, we had coffee with Recode? I remember Mike came in during that period, and, you know, we were really just focused on sort of the town center Recode that was the display out there. But of course, people bring in whatever they're concerned about. And there were several people who talked about, you know, not feeling safe as a pedestrian. And I told them, there's a bicycle pedestrian committee now. Pay attention, help support them, you know, and of course, we can't do improvements all over town all at once. It's a very gradual process, but people drive around town. They will see that sidewalks are going in, you know, in different places. So I think it's, it's that balance between wanting to access to nature and protecting open spaces. And, and so not, you know, and, and at the same time, keeping residential areas stable. You know, right now, I mean, there's a state law where I think we can add housing units. What do they call it? ADUs. What's the A?
Auxiliary dwelling unit.
Housing units, yes. So, I mean, that's, that's a state law. And so, and most towns didn't allow that for a long time. And that's recognizing we need greater density. We need more housing units. So here we are. Doesn't destabilize a neighborhood though. So thank you for starting off the first question.
I have a comment for you. I read this earlier this evening before we came in. My first impression was it was very well thought out. I much appreciated all of it, from the very beginning to the very end. Last year, we, we had a very, yeah, last year, we had a different kind of update, but this was a good update to scope the whole project because it's been so long. And what I liked about it was that you didn't, you didn't try to sell how good it was. You just stated the facts. You told us the good, the bad, the ugly, what are the concerns, what are the things that people have done? What have we done because of what people are saying? And it just goes to show that you guys have done a great job of listening. And I, I do know that we're not going to make everybody happy. That's the world we live in, and that's fine. But you guys have done a really good job, and you've been on this for a long time, and you definitely deserve some kudos and very, very, very much appreciated.
We tie you. Thank you.
You've gone a long way.
Did you?
I said you've come a long way. It's, um.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
I mean, those first sessions, we were, you know, we had done with the fire station and those discussions, I think, it was hard to tell at that point which, you know, where the dominant direction would come from, but I think, I think you see a lot of, a lot of balance, which is good, because I think sometimes things can go ajar quickly.
Yeah. And of course, we thought it was going to be basically a two-year process, and then go to town meeting. It's like, well, no. And, and it's not surprising, once you engage, you know, you really do take time to have those conversations and then make the changes that make sense. I mean, one of the things I could have put in here and I didn't is retail, the nature of retail is changing a lot. So, you know, some of the things that we looked at in terms of, you know, we're going to be making some changes now as a result of, you know, realizing that retail is not doing a lot of expanding. And so we don't need to worry as much about keeping it focused in a certain area. So we'll probably update you in a shorter period of time, you know, when that next draft comes out, to point out some of those things that come out of that, sort of the Planning Board conversations. So that you won't have to start from scratch.
Thank you for keeping us informed.
Yeah, I, I would also add that the length of time hasn't necessarily been a bad thing because for a lot of us that have been here for a very long time, change is really hard. And change that comes at a fast pace is not necessarily welcomed with open arms. So the length of time that this has taken has created an ebb and flow of emotions for people to be able to digest and to be able to think about it, and more importantly, for them to be able to change their mind on their own accord. And I think that's what this time has done. It's been a good process for a lot of people to really reflect and say, I don't need that. And then, you know, after some time goes by, they say, oh, maybe I have to get used to that, and just because they've thought about it for a little bit. So, you know, I don't think it's been that bad of a thing. It's been long, and we appreciate the time, but it, I think it's also serving good as well.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, your point about having illustrations, I think, is big step forward just because a lot of folks just don't get it. If they, if they read it, they have to see something as well.
Right, right. And I think, you know, the whole sort of review and approval process for new projects coming through will be much easier, more straightforward.
Of course.
My, my only concern is, is the timeline as it relates to any developers that may or may not come to town and want to do things, but get tired of waiting. But we have to do, we have to do our due diligence to do, again, that, I'm just.
I mean, they're not waiting. They're coming right through, you know, they're, they're coming before the Planning Board. Projects are being reviewed, approved, you know, and so it's, it's until we, I mean, that's one of the things that Mark helped us to understand, or helped me as Chair of CPIC to understand, is why all, the whole of Recode needs to move forward together, because right now, we have the code we have. And at a certain point where it's hopefully approved at a town meeting, we will have a new code. But developers coming through, they've got a code, you know, and, and some of them, there are things that have projects that are being developed that are being influenced by the new code, which is a good thing. You know, they, they can sort of see where things are going. And I think there's a lot of development in Brunswick, and so people are seeing different ways that development is happening. And I think that's helping to, I think it's helping to see, show people that the care that's being taken in this process. The staff have been just amazing. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Great report.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Consent Calendar. Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Select Board Meeting of November sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Salute.
Thank you.
Check it all there. On to new business, twenty-five, one hundred. Consideration, any appropriate action on a request from Sarah Kennedy, forty-four Golden, Goldeneye Drive Proposal to Tipping Trees on Town Land. Ms. Kennedy is here, and we'll let her elaborate on her request.
Well, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name's Sarah Kennedy. I reside at forty-four Wolfen Eye Drive in Thompson. I'm here this evening, as stated, to request permission to go tipping on public land. This would be a land specifically around the, the transfer station Thompson Bonds. This land is immediately accessible to me, and I reside in Bay Park, and it'd be a short walk through the woods or a drive around to gather brush. This is an opportunity for me to get back into the workforce after having taken some time off to be with my three young kids. I grew up doing this in Washington County, so I have some experience and some knowledge. But I provided one sheet here with some nice excerpts from forestry experts at the University of Maine, if any of these terms are unfamiliar. What I would be doing is harvesting very small scale, probably no more than fifty to seventy-five pounds of, for, for my own purposes. I brought you samples. If you'd like to see what I would be doing. And I'm going to be making them in my own home and be selling them through Farm, Wolf Farm, Fairman's Farm for small profit to help finance our family holiday. We have the initial question.
I'd like to see your sample that you brought.
Sure. This is a sample. This is the very largest that I would take. More ordinarily, I'd probably just take this.
How many of those pieces there would make one reef?
Uh, that's a really good question. It depends on if it's single-faced or double-sided. With this double-sided, and you are, find a river, make it full. You would take a pile of those and stack them about eight high. Can you imagine that? That'd be about, I'd say, a nice half a week. And I'll set our pieces for another item that I make an example of that as well.
Okay.
This actually, I hold true. This centerpiece I made from brush that I did gather from small standing trees. I asked the gentleman at Transfer Station if that was all right, and he had standing trees. This is some white pine on the bottom, some cedar in the middle, and then these are some small, very small tips pushed in. So that's another example of something that I can make at my kitchen table at night. I can easily make two at night, maybe three.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Ah, they're not really questions, more statements. As a Thompson resident, you know, I feel like for us to be able to wander on the town land is something that's doable. If we plucked a few branches off some trees doing that, I think that many people do it. The one insert I have is the for-profit of the commercial use of town land. We don't have an ordinance for it, and I, part of me feels that this opens a can of worms. And because what happens the next time someone says, well, I want to, I have this firewood business. I just want to go cut down some trees and use that off the land. It poses, I think, a bigger question that has never been brought up, that is being brought up tonight, and that's whether or not we as a board want our town land to be used for commercial purposes in general. And, and what is, what does that look like if that's something that we want? I'm not, I'm not sure where I stand on that. What are your guys' thoughts?
I would have to compare with what you just said. It, it does open up. You know, one bird may do it right, and the next one might not.
That's true.
And then you open the floodgates for, well, all right, well, I want to go get holly berries. I want to get firewood. I want to go get, I'm going to go cut a Christmas tree. The next thing you notice is.
Yeah, it's, it's tough because we try to give an inch, and then someone wants to take a mile, and that's the hard part with what we see without any clarity. What are your guys' thoughts?
I think that we don't really want to be in the business of bartering for business, you know, like, what can you do to help us, and then we let you do it. I don't think we want to, I don't think we have the time to be involved with that. It's not that we don't, it's not that we don't want to support a family that wants to produce things, but I think that we need to stay in our lane, that this is not something that would fall in our situation. And it just open, it just creates the possibility that everybody and their brother is going to want to harvest something on land, and then we're spending all of our time dealing with that. But I like what you said. Maybe what we should do is request that the town staff come up with a policy for this kind of thing. And at least there would be something in the books. Right now, there's no policy for this, and so, you know, I don't know if that's something that would be a good idea to look at.
We actually, this summer, ran into, there were some for-profit entities that asked to use the foresight complex for like a company picnic, and we told them no, because it's been nonprofits could use it. But, so I think there would be some merit for us to come up with a proposed policy for use of town land in general, commercial, non-commercial, whatever. And then you bring it before you guys to consider it, so.
Yeah, and would you, I, you would think that, or would you think it would be under one policy, one for the corporate rental of our land versus the profiteering off of land?
I think it probably could all be done in one.
Okay, but those two very specific things.
Regarding what you said about trees, we do have the town land harvested periodically, the trees harvested.
But the town benefits from that.
Right, exactly. But you could say it's a commercial use. We sell the trees up occasionally. So I, I think it is worth us trying to come up with a policy for you guys to consider and weigh in on it. Unfortunately, it probably won't be in the next two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, out of the gate, I'm thinking, this is a good thing. What's, what's the harm?
Sure.
Again, it, it opens up, and then we set precedents, and then now we're a couple. Right.
Yeah.
Kind of a tough spot to be in here.
Would the Board welcome one additional call?
Sure, anytime.
Oh, great. I very much appreciate what, what you're.
Okay. Um, I very much appreciate um what what you're saying, especially about the time investment uh managing the bartering process. Um, the only creative idea I have um that that might be worth considering is um whether I might offer to the town writing an open access publication in the form of an ebook on um how uh how to do this, how to create um holiday decor from evergreen materials. I could write it, publish it, put a Creative Commons license on it and make it freely available to the town as an educational resource. Something that um other townspeople could um essentially learn how to do and make money. Um, it's a form of free application that I could offer. That's one idea I had um to help give back to the town and um maybe promote this as an economically viable endeavor for folks who want to do private work. But uh
Is this something that maybe it's, you should consult with the conservation?
As far as the tipping, it might be a bit, they get there to weigh in.
There's not a lot of firs, uh fir-type trees down on the transfer station land. There's um a couple of sections that are there. I I have your email. Uh, my wife makes reads as well. And there's quite a few spots that we go to that's on people's lands that we can share with them. Because they do it, they want it done because they want their trees. It helps the trees. It's helpful to their growth. So I will, I'll send you an email um about that. At least, I mean, if this doesn't work, at least there's other places that you can go in Topson. Just a way to maybe connect some community members.
Sound like a win-win.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that sounds like a
I think we need guidelines over.
Yeah, we definitely need this. Do we need to vote on that? You're you're doing that, or do we just ask you to do it and then
I just think that you asked me to do it, so.
Thank you for coming before. I appreciate you, Sarah. Appreciate you.
So we're not taking action on this one.
We're going to take a motion.
Probably a motion that you're not going to give the permission right now.
Okay. So the motion, um not taking the action.
Yes, I would make the motion that we deny the request.
All right. I'll be moving second all favor. And we'll instruct town manager and staff to raise some policies on this for future use. All right, thank you. All right, twenty-five, one oh one. Consideration, any appropriate action on the appointment of Charles Farrell to the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee?
Well, we interviewed um Chuck Farrell, who would like to be called Chuck, um, this afternoon. Uh, he really liked the consensus that the value and the goals of the citizens are fitting to this comprehensive plan. Uh, he wants to participate. He likes that citizens participate and come to workshops and all of those kinds of things. And he likes the idea that Topson is a clean and safe place to live, and um I think I've represented him correctly. Does anyone have any comments about the interview, or shall I go through the motion? I make a motion that we appoint Charles Farrell to the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee.
Second.
Move it second, all favor. Motion carries.
Okay.
All right, we're we're moving into executive session. Item twenty-one, twenty-five, one zero-two. Need a motion to enter into executive session. Make a motion to enter that. Thank you.
Yeah, we had this, or it was like, Runz would send overs to pretty good reading yard at the center. Last time your your report was my top story, you retired from
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have anything. It is exciting tonight.
Uh, we have a motion on the table to go into executive session for Mike and a second from Dave.
Do we need to lose the reason? Could we do that one?
Yeah, you're right. It should, it should state the reason in the motion.
Discuss, discuss for
And actually with the site.
So Mike.
And very similar, number one, M S A four five six A to discuss personal matters. Okay.
We have a second from Dave.
Okay, all favor? All right, we're in executive session.
So, um, there are three into executives.